But at this time, I think we're going to call the meeting to order. At this time, roll call please. Here.
Mr. Eusse.
Present.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
And present Mr. Rzeszowski.
And at this time, if you're able to stand, we're going to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The virtue card reading tonight will be done by...
Mr. Whitmore.
Mr. Whitmore.
And the virtue this week, this month, is thankfulness. Thankfulness is being grateful for what we have. It is an attitude of gratitude for learning, loving, and being. Appreciate the little things that happen around you and within you every day. Think positively. Thankfulness brings contentment. You are practicing thankfulness when you are thankful for the gifts of life. Appreciate your own abilities instead of envying others. See the difficulties of life as opportunities to learn. Enjoy your sense of wonder about the beauty in the world. Are willing to receive what others want to give. You are practicing when you count your blessings every day. The affirmation is, "I am thankful for the many gifts within me and around me today. I appreciate my life, I look for the lessons, and I expect the best." Thankfulness.
Thank you, Terry. Guidelines that we've developed as a board of education. With an open mind, we will establish an atmosphere that allows expression of all views, even when views are not in line with all members. Being respectful of time, we work collaboratively with the district administrator by having open and honest conversations around district priorities. We will work collaboratively with all stakeholders to monitor key indicators so that equitable teaching and learning results in high achievement. We work toward building a trusting environment where both students and staff can reach their full potential and celebrate successes in academics, the arts, and athletics. At this time, we're going to open up to public comments. Public comments for this evening. Quiet crowd. We welcome those comments. But at this point then, we're going to move on to showcasing our schools and our student learning. We're very fortunate this evening to have our Central Wisconsin STEM Academy providing us an update. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Chris Goodwin.
Um...
Thank you for being here.
Well, thank you for having us. So, we were very lucky recently. ERCO reached out to Mr. Rogers, as the management has changed over there, and wanted to reestablish a relationship between our school and their school and their community involvement, and wanted to participate with the SEMI cap. And was trying to figure out what that was going to look like. And that brought forth a lot of conversations there and what that might look like, whether it is our students going there or their employees coming to CWSA to visit. We're in the process of evaluating what's going to work best for their staff as well as ours. But we're excited that that relationship is going to come back into our school district and especially our school. We look forward to that. I think the thing that was very timely about it is this occurred last week before our Governance Council meeting this week. And we really evaluated not just ERCO, but the community, all of the businesses, all the people, all the retired people in our community. How can we reach out more, not just to ERCO, but to the community as a whole? If you can, look at the screen. We're just coming up with a rough draft right now from our Governance Council meeting last night. We're going to start opening up Thursday afternoons at CWSA for people to come and tell our students about their career. Now, what's specific and important about this is it makes learning real. I'm learning this, and this is what it does for me. And as these people come on Thursday, I'm going to work with these people and I'm going to keep their... Work with them to create questions and presentations built around the things that we are teaching. I'm going to take Tuesday to frontload our students, to prepare them specifically for these visitors. And we want to then connect those visits to specific standards. And that doesn't always mean science, because it's easy to look at ERCO and say, "Oh, you're going to be looking at science standards specifically, probably going to be talking about chemistry." It could be, how do local economics affect the national economy? I could easily have that social studies touched on by someone from Jacobi Cuse. I can have, what is it like to start a new business? What are the risks and effects you have to take into account? Another core social study is economic standards. We have people that have opened businesses. Party Animal is a new business in our community. There's room and places for me to tie standards to almost anything and anyone that wants to come visit. We also want to get this pamphlet out, be it at the community center, be it at the library, be it at places in our community. And eventually, we want to include, on the flip side, a description of what CWSA is, because how many people in the community don't even know it exists or don't know what it is or how it works as a tool for our community. So, we want it to reach people that maybe don't have careers anymore but are retired. And we want them to let them know that they're welcome. And we want their input. And we want them to be a part of our school and our community. And so it's just, we're just looking at more ways to pursue reaching out and creating relationships and expanding those relationships for not only our school, but the school district as a whole. And that's something that we're excited about right now. Does anyone have any questions or things? And ideas, by the way. I take those.
So, Chris, if all of us sitting around the table were to do one thing, what would it be that could help? I mean, would it be taking this flyer and giving it to area businesses or retirees that would want to... Because you do want a hands-on experience for kids, too.
I honestly, locally, as far as the business goes, it might be interesting if someone from the board accompanied students as they made the rounds with local businesses. So that those businesses saw not just our students, but the engagement of our board. That might be an interesting day or, you know, an afternoon. That could be an interesting play for that.
Good.
I think one interesting component may be to look for former students of NACUSO that went to school here. I have one individual in mind, Todd Wimble. He's a student, was a student here and entrepreneur and now owns a little business. You know, to have people come in and work some engineering field. You know, but to have, you know, maybe those kind of people that have homegrown stories, you know, that really can show real-world experiences such as what you're looking for. I thought, I think I would... I'm going to look at trying to find some people with those stories.
I'd love it. I'd love it. Like I said, we just want to make sure that these are available in public places as well as to businesses and anyone else. We just want to get the word out more about what we do and why it's important as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have another, Mr. Goodwin stepping up?
We're going to... Lex, do you want to make a preface to this?
My name is Hudson Goodwin. I'm a student at CWSA, and I wanted to share the process of how we do our projects. So, when we do a project, we start out with a project topic. And my topic was, how can I build a computer? How can I build a computer for CWSA so people can use it for various resources? And it has to have some authenticity, so an impact on people or someone or an organization. And the impact was obviously to help students have availability. And my driving question was, how can I build the best low-price, high-value, powerful computer for the students? And I wanted to tie this in to learning standards. So then, the standards I used were evaluating computing design, which seems to be good to compare computers for the best needs. And the other one I did was analyze data. Analyze data from tests to determine similarities and differences among several designs, solutions. So then, there's some things I need to find out through these standards that I need to learn. And I'm going to highlight them. These are need-to-knows. So they're like a guideline of how to do our project and how to connect your topic with your standard. So, I had to describe the constraints and the criteria. So, when I was doing the project, if I was to present this to the CWSA board, it would need to be under a certain budget. So, that was a major constraint. I had to describe the systematic process to evaluate the computers. And I can show you how I did that in the slideshow. The other need-to-know for the standard was use a systematic process for evaluating solutions with respect to how well they will meet the criteria and constraints of the problem. So, that's basically how well will it solve the problem and the needs of the students, which I had to take into consideration. For the next one down, analyzing data from tests, I had to describe similarities and differences between the solutions. I had to redesign a new computer based off the test results I had found from the similarities and the differences of the comparing designs. And then, that's what I based my project off of. So then, from there, what I would do is I took a week to do my research on the computers and their power and their price and how they would help the students or benefit the students. And then, I turned that into a draft. Now, I only have my final draft up here right now. But it started out just as the computer components and some pros and cons. So that was my draft one. We do a total of three drafts. First, we'll do a draft with the basic of what we found through our studies for the first week. And then, we might edit it or find that it needs to meet more of the standards. So then, we'll make a draft two, and we'll add some things. So then, I added something that had to do more with test results. In this, I took test results. I did something called iterative testing, where you do a test over and over again to find the correct result. And I did that. I compared these tests, and I got the answers I needed. And this was in my second draft. And in my final draft, which is this, I compared even more benefits, pros and cons of the computer through the testing process. And I came up with my final draft. And then, so it's a computer for CWSA where I need to know what they want to use it for. So then, I made a survey for the students of CWSA, what they would want to use or learn the computer for. And I did this, I took the test. So, here is, I gave them the options between building a computer, video editing, game design, photo editing, and CAD design for what they would be interested in. And these were the main results I got. Then, I scrolled down, and this is how likely they were to make a video for the project if they were interested in that. Most were leaning toward the area of 3D, which is not very interested, but there's some students who were more interested in this topic. And then, another question was if they would use CAD designs to make scale models in their projects. I just repeated the process of, would they use game designs? Would they use video editing? Would they use things like photoshopping their products? And I took the results to see if it was worthwhile to get a computer for CWSA so they could use these opportunities. And then, I ended with if they thought that we had the resources to do this. And not everyone responded to this one. Some people missed it because there was a technical error. That was pretty much the whole process of my project. Oh, yeah. Yesterday, I presented the idea to the CWSA council so I could get funding for this computer to try and give the student, my peers and my friends, more opportunities to learn in different ways.
And the council said... I love it.
Stipulations is bringing back the survey.
Awesome.
So, this was created and implemented today. In response to the meeting last night, yes. Very good.
That is really good.
Uh, any questions, comments, suggestions, concerns?
Well, are you looking at... You'll have to take it back to the Governance Council, but are you interested in building a computer for this?
Yeah. I would be excited to give other students the chance to make their projects even better. Or like, one of the things I talked about was Photoshop. So if students could make their own images related to their projects, I thought that would be a cool way to take use of it.
Have you built a computer before?
Yes.
How many?
One. I fixed the CWSA Chromebooks, and I've taken apart another two.
Very nice. That's an even...
How old are you then?
Eight.
So Hudson, I happened to catch that there are several students that are interested in building it with you.
Yeah.
So what might that look like?
Well... Well, yeah. So I wanted to... I was going to bring in an older computer that I have so I could teach them how to build a computer and how to maintain computers so that when I'm gone, they can maybe use that knowledge to keep the computer running or upgrade it, I guess. And they can teach other students, and the process will go on. Because building the computer, maintaining the computer, up there, you can see that is the most highly interesting.
Excuse me, I can't...
That was good.
Great.
It is.
I'm looking forward to the feedback from the Governance Council and hopefully maybe see a computer that you built there.
And in the presentation last night, you know, Hudson went deep into comparisons of the different gifts and three different models and went into language that I can't understand about different specs on it and stuff. It was very interesting to see the amount of work and the differences in processors and the differences in USB ports and stuff that he was comparing and talking about. So it's pretty interesting.
So if it happens, we'd expect that you'd come back and share the... Tell the story from here till when it's built? Awesome.
That was fantastic. Well, I really want to thank you very much for bringing this to the board tonight. And again, compliment you on getting that survey together so quickly and responsibly. You're very welcome.
When you're engaged in something, boy, things happen fast, don't they?
Good job, big guy. Good job.
Thanks, Hudson.
Okay. We're up.
Thanks, Chris.
Yep. Mr. Goodwin, thank you guys very much for your time this evening. It's time for an update from Mr. Nick Wishmeyer.
All right. Well, I have a few things going on with the student body right now. One thing that Student Council's working on is winter break the week previous. We're looking at how to structure that for us here. We need to make some advisory activities, and we're looking to flex that Friday potentially just to do some different activities. So, that's one thing that we're working towards right now. NACUSO's Got Talent is right around the corner. Next week is auditions. One of them is on November 29th, and the other one's on December 2nd. And the live show is December 6th. So, and that'll be at 6:30 in the NHS audit program, the live show. So, that's going up very fast. That's the main focus for me and for Student Council right now.
I think in the past, you provided a little bit more details about NACUSO's Got Talent is a fundraiser for...
For hurricane relief...
Hurricane relief effort.
Yes.
And you had told us how many participants there were.
Yeah, we're looking at 20 participants. So we're looking to gauge it towards... So once we have auditions, we're going to narrow it down to 20 people. If we have less than that, we'll decide a number at that time. There are no admission fees, just because that creates issues with music copyrights and such. So we decided that we would just ask for donations at the door, but not require them.
And they dated that again?
That'll be December 16th, that's a Saturday, at 6:30 PM.
How are you doing, Hudson?
Uh, there are posters up around town right now, and I think we had it in the AMS newsletter and in the high school newsletter.
And we've announced it periodically. And also, Paul Kennedy was taking an independent study, of course. Interviewed Nick, and that's on our website as well.
Very good. Facebook page maybe has any of that? Yeah, Facebook page, I should say, yeah.
Yeah, and that's definitely been on there as well.
Correct.
All right.
Did... Has... Have you got a contact with Domtar, with their sign? Did you already? Okay.
Should definitely be something that I do here next week. A great transition from Mr. Rogers as well. Live announcements is something we're doing at the high school. So on Tuesdays and Fridays, we're trying to do a live announcement broadcast. So Victor, myself, Joel, and JJ Melby are all putting together a live broadcast. We go from 7:31 to 7:35 with news and weather, a new segment. At 7:35, we do the actual announcements, and that's broadcast in each classroom live. So that's something new we're trying. We've only done two so far. So, we're looking to see how that goes and maybe put out a survey coming up in the next couple of weeks just to see how it's going for the school. So...
Quite a great example of perseverance and problem solving on all of your parts.
Most definitely. Advisory, I think I mentioned this last time as well, but we've changed advisory a little bit to create more club time. And by what I can tell by talking to advisors and club members, it's working well. There was a regional summit for Student Council last week where we had Student Council members go. And that was how that DWSP for the Wisconsin Association of School Councils. And we had some students go, and they brought back good information to the council. And there was also a link crew summit in Milwaukee, and that was on Thursday last week. So, are there any details you want to add?
She's sitting back there shaking her head.
Yeah. It was a fantastic opportunity for the students that are link leaders. We... I had some money within the counseling budget, as well as Webb Memorial Foundation sponsored the hotel stay for all of the students. So we were able to go down on Wednesday night and spend the night as a group. So there was some good team bonding going on with different games and stuff that we had done and just having fun. Then the next morning, the conference was only four hours. So we got there a little bit before eight, and we left a little bit after noon. The first part of the morning was the advisors as well as all of the different students that were there. There was eight different schools represented, a little over 100 kids. And just a really neat team building, but not with just your team. It was... You were all mixed up together, doing different partner activities, doing different quad activities, just relays and just different ways to get the kids engaged. And then there was a break at 10 o'clock, and then the coordinators broke off to do our question-and-answer session. And then, the students stayed down in the gym with the facilitator and did more activities that they're now able to bring back to offer as freshman activities during advisory times. So, it was an awesome opportunity for Ellen and I to talk and meet with coordinators from other schools to hear what they're doing and how they've been implementing the program. Most schools there have had the program for the... We were on our year one. The next school was on year five, but most of them were in that 10 and 11-year range. And just hearing the sustainability and how it's still one of the priority clubs within their building and the great things that continue to come from it year after year was really encouraging for us as first-year coordinators to hear and to take away. And they have some unique ideas that we're looking at maybe putting in with changing out lockers and things of that nature. And we just ran some of those ideas by our crew leaders this morning at our bi-weekly meeting. And they're all about it. We were nervous about, you know, how are some upperclassmen going to feel about maybe having their lockers by their freshman crew? And they're all like, "No, that's a great way for us to check in on them." So they're really taking it all in and trying to make the best program for the students. So it's been fantastic for our first year.
Awesome. Fantastic. Thank you. All right.
Looking for the paintings downtown.
Students want to paint today for our Domtar. They're all... I believe some buildings that we posted or some...
Oh, really? Cool. That'll be fun.
Otherwise, any questions for me?
Just to thank you, and I had indicated earlier, we might have a little book for you. Move on.
Oh, do we ever.
Signed copy.
A signed copy. Don't leave without it, Nick.
Thank you very much for your input, Nick. Very much. We're on to the school culture survey.
Yes, so every year, we do surveys within our schools. And one of the surveys we really look at is school culture. So what we've asked is each principal to give a description of, you know, what they've found and then what they're doing as a staff to move, you know, their work forward based on the culture survey. So do you want to go first, Mr. Schman? Awesome.
One of the things that we... You know, we did this survey over the fall again, and our goal really is directed at teachers and specifically around some measurables. And I threw this at the bottom of your pile right there. When you look at the pile right there, this is just... I didn't put a name up here because this is... I didn't think of it. But what we do is you get a weighted average on each one of the question responses. And if like a perfect score would be five, that means everybody strongly disagrees. Or I mean, strongly agrees. So in looking at the data, what we did as a staff, we took the results. Then we had a staff meeting. We took some time to analyze it. One of the things I did is I gave them this, and I said, "This is where we were last year. This is where we were this year. And here's individual categories and where we're at right now." They also had a copy of the actual assessment that they took, and they looked at people's comments on that. And from that, then, what they identified was celebration challenges and areas where we should put our energy into that. And they wrote that down, and they gave that to our... One of our leadership's team PLC Council. And they're going to use that information to build into our 100-day plan that's coming up. For me personally, the things, you know, one of the things that I noticed that, you know, as we're celebrating, we're trending a little bit up, which is positive. That's something that I noticed. You can see that in the back, just the weighted average of the 33 questions. And then also, just the highest four, which are labeled in green, got a little bit higher. And the lowest four, which are labeled in red, they also got a little bit higher, too. So that, you know, for... So that, you know, for me, that was good. And then the area where I see that I think we'll end up talking a little bit about, we can't always address all these things right away, but the area, one of the things that I do see is probably trying to figure out a little bit more is that a small section called learning partnership in the middle. And that's down here where my thumb is on that paper. And that really talks about partnerships with outside our school. And then that's something, you know, with parents and other members of the community and that, that's a little more challenging. But that's one that we'd want to take a look at. And, oh yeah, the teacher collaboration on the back is like, oh my gosh, what do you mean? Teachers are not collaborating? No, we're collaborating. But there's some specific questions here, like in the back, some instructional practices that we just don't do. And that's something worth an opportunity for us to grow. Whether or not we make that a priority, that'll be up to one of our leadership teams. But otherwise, the things that, you know, what I was pretty happy about was unity of purpose and then the collegial support. Both those scored really high. So, you know, that tells us something. And we acknowledge that as a staff in that saying, you know what, you know, that's important. That's why we have those instances. That's something.
Any questions?
Good information.
It is good information. And you kind of alluded to what struck you the most. But if you could maybe highlight that again, what struck you the most about?
You know, the thing that, you know, honestly, I'm really, really thankful for with our staff is just number one, that people go to the back and help each other. Let me help that. And that comes out in our survey. And that's, again, in the section right here where you see a band of green. Again, this is the color from this fall, but you can see it's been running through over the last, you know, two years now since I've been there and tracking it and stuff. So that's, I'm feeling good about that. The unity of purpose, that's awesome in the back. And I'm going to give, you know, Keith a shout out and that, I know he laid a lot of traps on that and we've been able to keep that up. So I'm happy about that. And just those are a couple of celebrations that we can get about.
Good. I think that's celebration.
Thank you, John. Any other questions? All right, how about the middle? In the middle.
In the middle. The sale, the sale team or school planning team looked, took a look at this survey. We also categorized it into two categories, you know, some areas of challenge and some areas of celebration. And then we talked about action items that were going to come out of that meeting with our school planning team. And we had looked at the celebrations and what we could do about those. And really, the team said we need to recognize them. Just publicly recognize that these things are happening and that they're, they're good and we need to keep them, keep them rolling. And then we also talked about the challenges. And we, we kind of looked at those challenges and said, you know, some of the like disagreements over instructional practices voiced openly. And teacher involvement in policy and decision making. Those were two of the areas of challenges. And we said, you know, what, what action items can we take out of that? And one of the things that the, the school planning team came up with is defining within our, our building goals, what is negotiable and what is non-negotiable. You know, so what do we need to do, period? What do we have some flexibility around doing in our, in our focus areas? And for CPM, so an example of that is some non-negotiables, you know, you need to have a strong closure. Teachers need to be interacting with groups. Teachers need to use study team strategies. And the negotiables of that were what kind of questioning techniques? And which study team strategy selection you're going to pair with, with your lesson? So that, that was one example. And our other areas where we looked at negotiables and non-negotiables were ELA workshop and co-planning to co-serve and responsive classroom. And where teachers had some flexibility in there and just declaring some of that. And then what the school planning team members did with, with this information was they went back to individual PLCs, grade level PLCs. And we talked about those celebrations with them. And then talked about the negotiables and non-negotiables with the staff. And then took a summary of comments from that group. And then we organized it into a, a table that had, had the responses. So those comments that we got from each grade level PLC on one side. And then school planning, school planning team action suggestions. And that's where we're at right now, is putting those suggestions down in here and as actions on those comments that the teachers were given. You know, one of those, I wouldn't say culminated today, but took another step in the process today. And I had some conversations with Nathan around science curriculum in fifth grade. You know, and Nathan is meeting with Mitchell, who does our fifth grade science and myself. And we're going to go through some opportunities for growth in the area of science. So those were some action steps that our school planning team took.
The culture surveys, are they different for each school?
They're the same questions.
They're the same questions?
Yeah, but you can, you know, obviously you can filter them by school.
Correct. Okay.
Yeah.
So you were able to look at, we looked at the same questions that, that humked it.
Right.
And the high schools same.
And so you have some benchmarking to kind of, from where you were, do you see?
Yeah, one of our, one of our school planning team members took and looked at last year's and this year's and put them side by side. And that was also one of the pieces of information that each of the school planning team members, when they went back and talked to their grade levels, had available along with a copy of, the full copy of the survey results.
Great. So I guess the same question, what struck you the most about the culture survey this year? Were the high points, celebrations, or areas to work on you? Maybe you covered those and I didn't touch them.
Okay, well, for celebrations, I would say teachers planning together and taking time to observe each other. We had scheduled one of the days, or actually, it was two days earlier in the year that was specific to just a schedule that teachers could fill out and say, I want to go to see this class during this time. It could be an advisory time, it could be an encore time, it could be a core class. And all that, I, I took that schedule and gave it to a guest teacher. And that guest teacher went through and visited those different classrooms and covered for teachers as they could go and observe other staff members. So that was a positive. I think that day had something, had, had to do with that celebration, you know, and planning together. Our, our instructional strategies that we're using with CPM and workshop model, co-planning to go serve is really conducive to, and a necessity for teachers to be planning together to create some of that coherence. So that was celebrations. Challenges, you know, I, I touched on disagreements over instructional practice and teacher involvement in policy and decision making. And I think those were two of the things that echoed some of the other disagreements too. And, you know, just being clear, being transparent about what we need, what we need to do. We're not, we're not going to discuss, you know, we're not going to discuss if we're going to do the workshop model. We're not going to discuss if we're going to do CPM. We've, we've been down that road, but now we need to discuss what flexibility do teachers have in there and declaring that, being clear about it.
Thank you. And if I missed out the first time, I apologize.
That's okay.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
No, but it's, it's good that you're looking at the items that come back from the survey that are positives that you celebrate. Because a lot of times, there's always a focus on things that you need to work on. But it's good that you look at things that you're doing well and you celebrate those things. And that's good.
Did you touch on a example of how you have celebrated?
The, the school planning team said for celebrations, we just need to publicly declare it. So that's what every school planning team member did when they, they started off their discussions with grade level PLCs.
Oh, okay. Got it.
Thank you very much. Good job.
Mr. Jackson?
We went through a similar process with our school planning team, looking at the results. We did not this year go through what Mr. Spring did with the whole faculty looking at the protocol and working to it that way. What we did find was positive in that the results were trending in the direction we certainly would want to see them go. We also were very happy to see that the areas that we've really focused on as a school planning team, what we had worked on over the summer and then started in the school year with, really was, came through in the survey as having a positive effect, but also being the right work, at least as far as this survey would indicate. Still work to be done, you know, I mean, still continuing to work around certainly the collaborative leadership, communication, you know, all those pieces. The learning partnerships that Mr. Spring talked about, looking at, you know, parents and school staff being on the same page, those are all pieces that need to be, need to be worked on. And, you know, kind of figuring out the order of things is always a tricky, you know, a tricky thing, but.
Priority, huh?
Yeah, prioritizing. But we'll continue, November 29th, we'll be at another sale session. And this will be part of, we'll have this data. We also have the Gallup student poll results. We also have our ACT report, the school report cards, those different pieces of data that we'll be bringing all together in that day session to look at and make our next 100-day plan. But yeah, I mean, positives and things to learn and grow by the survey results. So.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you. So the 29th, they'll all, three of them and staff will be in Wisconsin Dells planning the next 100 days. So that's exciting.
This time we need to move to the school nutrition requests or proposals.
I'm going to stand because I just feel uncomfortable.
Very good. Thank you.
First of all, I'm going to start with my recommendation and then I provide you some reasonings why I'm presenting that recommendation to you. Administration is recommending approval to explore the feasibility of contracting school nutrition services. Right now, the school nutrition program is an in-house program, meaning that the staff are on our payroll. Everything is in-house. What I am requesting or what I am proposing is that we look to send out request for, for proposals to companies that take care of all of that. Which means we would make one payment to the service. The service would provide the people to work in our school and provide the food. They would provide everything in a contract. So that's my recommendation. But now I'm going to provide you some data as to why I am recommending that proposal. First of all, school nutrition is recorded in Fund 50. It is supposed to be a self-sustaining fund, which means that the revenues raised in Fund 50 should be enough to cover all of the expenses. If that is not the case, at any given year, if the expenses exceed the revenues and there is no fund balance in Fund 50, it is by state law that you have to take some money out of Fund 10, which is our instruction, and put it into Fund 50 to make it whole. So once you do that transfer, Fund 50 revenues equal Fund 50 expenses. That's law. The, or the revenues typically consist of state aid, federal aid, student deposits. There's also the expenses that are currently existing in our school district are payroll, salary and benefits, and also food expenses and sometimes maintenance. And I'm going to get to that point as well. So why am I making this recommendation? At your table, I actually have a little slideshow to, to present. This is just going to be some data that I'm going to give you to help you understand why this recommendation is coming forth. HES participation is Humke participation. I looked at our school nutrition participation for our breakfast and our lunch for each school so you can see whether our participation of students eating lunch is increasing or decreasing. The blue line is the breakfast, the orange line is the lunch. So at Humke, back in 1314, it jumped to 1415. I mean, we had a huge increase because we started offering free breakfast to all of our students. So that was the big jump back then. As you can see, the lunch has been steadily decreasing. We're still at a pretty good rate at Humke, which is just below 70%, which is pretty good for an elementary school. Okay? The next one is Alexander Middle School. Again, the blue line is breakfast, the orange line is lunch. And we had a little spike in 1415. I really can't explain why. But ever since then, we've had a steadily decline. Our breakfast is less, or just a, a little tick above 30%. Our lunch is just a little tick above 60%, which is a poor showing. And the high school. The high school breakfast has been on a decline for three years ago. But it's been, it's been, seen a little bit of an uptick. And also, the lunch is pretty steady. But look at the percentages. When I say steady, it's steady, not good. We have a, our participation at lunch for high school is just a little above 50%. And the breakfast is just a little above 30%, which is a poor showing as well. Our free and reduced percentages, this is from 1314 through 1718. And this is all data taken from October. Our, our lunch, free and reduced percentages are pretty steady. Now, we had a little drop in 1314 to 1415. And that's when we took 4K out of our free and reduced percentages. So we, we expected to see that little drop there. And other than that, it's been pretty steady. Now, when I say that's been steady, there are two ways that a parent could qualify for free and reduced lunch. One is direct certification, where I take some information and I upload it to the state and the state gives me some information saying, yes, this family or this student qualifies for free and reduced. That's called direct certification. And we're required to do that at least three times a year. The other way is an application. So if a student doesn't qualify for direct certification, they fill out an application. But if they don't fill out the application, then they are not recorded in the free and reduced percentages. So it's so important that we get those applications back from those students because it really affects our free and reduced percentages, which in turn affects other grants. So. So our federal and state aid, this is revenue in Fund 50. Now, our free and reduced percentage, the previous slide showed a little downtick in 1415. But our federal and state aid shows a huge uptick. If we had a downtick in free and reduced percentages, you would think that our, our federal and state aid would show a downtick as well. But if you remember the participation, there was a huge spike in participation in 1415, which goes to show you that if we have good participation, we get more federal and state aid. But since the participation started declining, our federal and state aid started declining as well. So that means less revenue in Fund 50. Here are our salaries. Now I'm looking at the expense side. Our salaries have been steadily increasing. We are a little over $200,000 just in salaries. And there are the benefits. The benefits have been increasing as well. And we're a little over $100,000 in benefits. So salary and benefits is, is half of the budget at least. Our food costs have seen increases. And that is a direct result of the federal law that, that Michelle Obama has implemented regarding the federal, or the hungry, hungry, I can never remember the name of it, I'm sorry. But it, it basically said that we had to, we have certain regulations that we have to follow in serving healthy food. We looked at our sodium, we looked at our carbohydrates, we look at all of the protein. There's a lot of things that we have to comply with. Which means everybody knows that if they eat healthy, it costs more money. So this is reflected in our school nutrition food costs as well.
Lynn?
Yes.
Was, was there something just recently in the news that the federal government was looking at rolling back some of these, some of these guidelines?
Yes, that is correct. I couldn't tell you what they were though. So, but they are, they have been looking at it. But it's not going to be to the point where we have free say in what we want to serve. So when you look at revenue and expenses as a whole, so in 1314, our revenues equaled our expenses. So we basically had a balanced budget. Now, there's a caveat with that. Back in 13 and 14, I was trying very hard not to do a transfer from Fund 10, taking, taking money directly out of instruction and putting it into school nutrition. So what I did is back in 1314, I made the decision. So what I did is, back in 1314, I made the decision that all maintenance costs would be recorded in Fund 10. So all the maintenance costs for the refrigerators, the ovens, the freezers, they should have been recorded in Fund 50, but I recorded them in Fund 10 because I wanted to keep this fund whole as long as I possibly could. So all these expenses do not reflect maintenance costs. If they did, the expenses, that orange bar, would be a lot higher because we had some major problems with our freezers and with our ovens, so... So in 1314, even though it's a balanced budget and we did balance it, there was a caveat to that. 1415, our expenses exceeded our revenues. 1516, expenses exceeded revenues, and 1617, expenses exceeded revenues. In 1718, I am projecting the expenses exceeding the revenues once again. So in order for, by law, we have to make school nutrition whole. So beginning in 1415, I had to do a transfer from Fund 10 into Fund 50. In 1415, it was a little, about $68,000. In 1516, it was a little over $80,000. In 1617, it was a little over $100,000. I am projecting a, about a $92,000 transfer in 1718. Fund 50 is not a self-sustaining fund, and I don't know how to get there anymore. Yes?
Lynn, I have a question about, about the, the funds that we, we are lacking for, you know, you've got in this little handout here, you've got three years. Last year it was $102,000, $103,000. Okay, out of the $103,000 that we had to pay out of the general fund to cover the, cover this fund, what percent of that money is unpaid, unpaid bills?
Uncollected lunches.
Uncollected lunches, thank you.
Yes, it's probably ranging about $68,000.
So $68,000 out of the $102,000 are just uncollected lunches?
If we collected everybody's lunch, we would still be short by about $30,000.
But that's cumulative over multiple years.
That is correct, that is correct.
That's not per year, you're getting that.
No, you are correct, Nathan. It is cumulative.
Oh, the $68,000 is a cumulative number.
Yes, that is correct.
That's gone over various years. Oh, okay.
Probably goes back, how many years?
Oh, my gosh.
Long time.
A long, long time, right.
Oh, okay. So it's a, on an annual basis, it's a sliver of the total dollar.
That is correct, yes, yes. And, you know, we do need to look at that policy, and I do need the board's direction on that, but that's for another night as well, so...
But even if, even if we would get a check from everybody with the $65,000, it would only, it would only happen one year, and then the next year, you know, we'd be back at that number.
Right, right. But it sounds like, it sounds like that dollar amount is a small percentage of the $100,000 that were short.
Yep.
So, okay, one other question is, there's, is there a limit on, through the federal government, I think there's a limit on how much we can raise lunches, right? There's a cap, right?
Correct. Yes, you can only raise them 10 cents per year, that is the cap. And I think last, we just raised, there was only one year that we raised it a nickel. Yeah, that I, that I'm aware of, so...
Okay. I'm out of questions for now, for now.
That's fine. So as you can see, I mean, we're in pretty dire straits with the school nutrition fund, so that is why I am bringing this recommendation forward. I wanna explain a little bit about this recommendation. It's a very detailed process. Because the school nutrition is so federally and state heavily regulated, there's a lot of steps I have to follow. Actually, the state has a template for a request for proposal. I kinda fill in the blanks, I have to send it to the state for approval, they send it back to me for, with any changes that I have to make, I have to resend it for them to approval, so again, they send it back to me, I have to send it to the vendors, and I believe there's a list on the DPI's website where I can send to the vendors. Once we send out the RFP, we have a pre-proposal meeting, just like the performance contract when we went through that. The vendors are invited to come in, we are here to answer any questions, they go for a tour of the kitchens if they like, just so they can get a feel as to what they're getting themselves into. They go back, they send out the proposal, they send their proposals to me if they wish to propose. In the memo, I indicated that I would award the contract, that is incorrect, that's incorrect language. What it is, is I would create an awards letter to pick the vendor that, that we feel is the best. I would have to send that into the state, but nothing is approved until it gets back to the board. The board is the final approval on everything. Now, if the board decide, and this happens from December all the way through May, so it's a long process. But if at some, any point in this process, the board says, you know what, forget it, we don't wanna do this, we wanna continue the transfers, we stop. So the board has the final say. If at the May meeting, you decide, you know what, even though, yeah, this looks great, yeah, we don't wanna do it, we're, we're just gonna stop it, you have that, you have that opportunity to do that. It's completely in your hands. So I just wanted to explain the little, the process. So all I'm asking tonight is that the board approve us to explore this, just so I can get everything in place that, you know, if, if we come back to the board in May and say, administration is recommending that we go with such and such service, you're gonna have all the information.
Are other schools in the same boat?
Yes.
In their districts?
Yes. Actually, I've been talking very closely to Merrill. They weren't as severe as, as we were, they were $50,000 in the hole, and they went to a service, and I've been kinda leaning on the business manager there because he went through the service and he's understanding the anxiety that I'm feeling over this, and he said that the first year was terrible. I mean, it was terrible for staffing, because you have to tell the staff that this is gonna happen. And he said, but after that first initial conversation and the year, he said, it got better. And at some point, the board wanted to bring back the staff back on, and they didn't wanna come back. They wanted to stay with their service, because there are some certain benefits with that service as well.
So that staff was actually hired up under the service?
Yeah, what happens is typically, the companies will take your staff and hire them as their employees then. So they won't lose any money. So if, for example, if somebody is making $1450 as a, as a cook or an assistant, SMP assistant, I tell the service, it's part of the contract, they're not making any less than $1450. Okay, that's fine. So they, they take on our staff, if the staff still chooses to be part of that company.
Is there services around here that pre-does the staff?
Correct. There are.
So just talk a little bit about what you've learned related to, you know, like at Merrill, how have the counts gone up?
The counts have, the participation has increased, I don't have any percentages, I don't, it hasn't gone up. The quality of food has gone up because these companies have buying power for the food. I mean, they're buying mega amounts where we're just buying this amount. So we're getting the high prices, they're getting those discount prices.
Plus they have experts on, you know...
On participation, helping or getting the students involved in the decisions of what's being served, or what they like, what they don't like, and just trying to, their main goal is to increase participation because they know if participation doesn't increase, there is going to be a deficit and they're gonna have to eat at them, so...
What was the, did you get any conversation about the result as far as what they were, what the food program was costing the district before they went to the service and what's costing the district now?
Merrill, when I talked to Merrill, they were in a $50,000 deficit, where they had to transfer $50,000 from their Fund 10 into their Fund 50. First year they broke even, the second year they put money into their fund balance for Fund 50. The company's goal is to increase that fund balance, excuse me, into Fund 50, because Fund 50 is responsible for purchasing new equipment, for purchasing new ovens, purchasing new freezers, purchasing new refrigerators. So they wanna build that fund balance, so they have enough money so they can purchase that new equipment and keep that rotation of that equipment current.
Is milk included in that?
That I don't know.
That's a good question.
That's a good question, that's a very good question. I guess I'm not into those wee details.
Correct. That's a big question.
It is, you're absolutely right, it is. Yep, yep.
And, yeah, I'm sure this decision to even move forward, come, you know, there's been a great deal about, because of the impact, we all remember our lunch ladies when we go to school. I do. And, you know, we wanna, we have to think about that, we also have to think about the financial responsibilities that we have in providing the lowest cost for our district. And again, I think at this point, it's just, you know, we have to look at it as an opportunity to explore what's out there. And like you say, we can make the decisions at the end.
So Lynn is meeting with, did you mention that?
Yeah, if it's approved tonight, I am, I have a meeting scheduled tomorrow at 9:00 in the morning with all the school nutrition staff because I want them to know exactly what's going on. I don't want them to be surprised at any point, so it's not going to be a fun meeting, but they need to know early enough.
Another question, I'm not gonna remember right now.
But Lynn, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
For your work, because this has been extremely hard, I mean, not just for her, it's been, you know, we've been trying to support and help a lot.
Are we still in charge of the menu, or did they set it for the district?
They would set it.
Okay.
Because they have all the expertise on staff, you know, make sure that we're compliant.
Can you give, just, so we're transferring, well, last year we transferred $100,000. What are we, what are we losing from that transfer? What did that cost us? I mean, what services did, you know, did we lose on that?
That's, that's a good question. If we didn't have to do that transfer, we would've added $100,000 to our fund balance, which in turn would have reduced our short-term borrowing probably, which would reduce our interest expense. It's like a domino effect. I can't tie it to a specific, specific service, but I do believe this year we lost $30,000, we were $30,000 in the red for 1617, and that's because there was an accounting. Anyway, we would've been, we would've put $70,000 into our fund balance.
What about the administration of the pre-lunch program? Do they assume that, or is that a responsibility?
I think that's something that you can, you can negotiate, like, I would prefer to keep that on, because when Karen Hanson left, she left about six years ago maybe, if I'm not mistaken, we never replaced her. All those, all that came into our office. So Diana took a lot of the payment responsibilities, and I took all of the free and reduced responsibilities. But I, I would negotiate to keep those responsibilities because I feel like I have some connection with those families, and when a family comes in and they just need to talk or cry or do something, I'm okay with that. I mean, I wanna help them as much as I can, so...
You wanna keep that?
I would like to keep that because I thought it would be a connection that we, I wouldn't wanna lose.
Well, thank you very much. I guess at this point, any other questions? On the board? We're looking, just, this is a school nutrition request proposal, I'm looking for a motion on the floor.
I'll second you.
Okay, we have a motion second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you very much, Lynn, for your efforts in that area.
And good luck.
At this point, Wood County parcel purchase, Terry Whitmore, can you please...
Absolutely. So Wood County Treasurer Heather Garrett recently contacted our office to extend an offer for the district to purchase five lots, highlighted in purple here on your document, that are currently in the floodplain and property of Wood County. The purchase amount for the district would be $1, and the rationale when I asked for such a sale is that the county is cleaning up unclaimed property. A background check on the property has been completed, and to the best of the county's knowledge, there are no issues with the property. So there's the five lots, and there's only one lot that really adjoins the district property. So there's four other lots that are there, and, you know, we just thought for a dollar, it would be in the district's best, best interest.
Would we get all those, all five for a dollar?
For a dollar.
I mean... What's, is that gonna, is that gonna be a tax burden on us, or...
No.
Very good, we have a motion on the floor to approve the Wood County parcel purchase.
Second.
If the motion is second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Going back to Terry, a results policy.
Yes, up next is academic performance, and in November here, we're talking about ELA, and Mr. Black is going to be tying that in with our strategy plan, I'm gonna give you a copy of that, as well as the current report card that was released today.
Yeah, a note is that in your board package, you received some details regarding ELA. We couldn't, but we're gonna talk some report, school report card because we couldn't release that to you earlier, it just came out today. And so, one of the things, but I, as we're starting in on this, I'd like to emphasize, and that's what's up here, that our focus areas that we've set for 2017 and 2018, just to, and I'm gonna tie each one of the, and our talk about the school report card and what we're doing, I'm gonna tie that back to each of these areas, just to get some continuity there. The first one of these is high-leverage instructional strategies. There is work that needs to be done, as you'll see on the report card, in the areas of student achievement, and we've seen this for a couple of years, and we started making the change last year to be able to start looking at, started last year on Reader's Writers Workshop, grades four through 12. This year, we are focusing on Reader's Writers Workshop, a form of it, for grades K through 12, as well as college preparatory math, grades six through nine, and that will continue to add another grade each year, so six through nine, next year will be six through 10, and six through 11, et cetera. So the areas that we're focusing on is high-leverage instructional strategies. Rather than do, let me just now tie that back directly to the report, whoops, I just hit the off button for the whole thing, so you're gonna have to talk, you're just, that's okay, it's hopefully not all the way off. If I can, if I can draw your attention to the school report card, is this, I tell you what, I can't talk and log in at the same time. Chew gum, yes, log in, no, so, just a minute. Grab that one. Lynn, I'm gonna have to have you sign it. No, no, you didn't turn it off, I did. But one of the notes I'd like to draw your attention to is, for the board members, we're waiting for that to come up. I've got a comparison that I'm, I want to draw your attention to the overall score. Our overall score is 72.4. Now, last year, we, which falls in under meets expectations. I'd like to note that that is a drop from the previous year, and that was, and let me go ahead and pull this up. Here is a comparison of this year's state report card to last year's state report card. Last year, and let me just go ahead and zoom in here a little bit. On last year's state report card, we came out, we were in the category of exceeds expectations with a score of 78.1. This year, we are at meets expectations with 72.4. Now, one of the things that, why I mentioned we knew that there was going to be a drop happening is because you do not implement new systems without seeing a dip in performance. It's basically known as an implementation, because everybody is learning how to go ahead and do things in different ways, these things don't turn on a dime. And as part of that, we were expecting the, the student achievement scores to go down slightly, and that you see is what happened. Not drastically, but that did go down. One of the ways that that impacted us though, well... One of the ways that that impacted us though, well, before I get too far into that, we are at seventy-two point four from meets expectations. But if you look down here at the bottom, the cutoff to exceeds expectations is seventy-three. In other words, even with our implementation dip, even with our drop, we are only point six below exceeds expectations where we feel that we can, will consistently need to be as a minimum over several years. We're looking at this as, the drop that we had is due to putting new systems in on those other areas. And we're really, even with those major changes, we're still not that far off from that exceeds expectation. So let's just keep that larger picture in mind, that we are fully expecting to be back here again this time next year and describing why we're back into that, into that category. So that's the first, first step of this. Now, talking about the high leverage instructional strategies, that impacts us in two areas. Student achievement and obviously student growth. You'll notice that last year, we had an extremely high level of student growth, eighty-seven point nine out of a hundred. This year, that fell to sixty-seven. I say fell, we're still slightly exceeding state averages. Our growth is in line with what's happening statewide. However, that is something that you don't have falling achievement scores and increasing growth scores very often. And though, as we're expecting that as our growth gets better and as we get better with the processes of teaching our ELA and math in more consistent ways, and especially, and this is a key, we're not just teaching it differently, we're teaching it differently one grade to the next. So a student does not have to learn a new way of learning math every year. A student does not have to learn a new way of learning reading every year. There's consistency that happens from one year to the next, and that's where the growth comes from, the systematic growth, as students are, we're building the system around the student rather than students having to adjust to each individual teacher every year. So we're at the front end of that still, but that's where we're expecting the growth to really come as students get several years in the system of learning in a certain way and get better at, it's not just the teachers who have to get better at learning that way, the students have to get better at learning that way. And as we get consistency in working on that, we're expecting to see our student growth scores, right now, currently above state average, we're expecting those to exceed in other areas. So that's the first area that talked about, and that is a large, when we look back at our strategic plan, that's a large area for why we're choosing high leverage instructional strategies. Not just any instructional strategies, these are ones research-based and shown to really make the biggest bang for the buck. So, that's the first note on that first area. I'd like you to, I'm going to, the next one of this, social and emotional learning. This is areas that we're certainly doing. You heard reports on Link Crew, you've heard talk about things happening advisory responsive classroom. The way that this shows up, and I hit the escape key that round, it, so the way that that shows up here on the report card, it's not a straight one-to-one, but you'll see that on on-track and readiness. So particularly in the graduation rate and the attendance rates, how often someone are here is a big reflection of how welcome they feel here. How, how well that they actually stay with the program and are able to graduate is a reflection of how well they're, is one measure anyways, of how well that they're able to go ahead and be there. In both of those areas, you'll notice our attendance rate, we're right about, in both those areas, we're above the state averages. We have a slight drop-off in graduation rate, I mean by a point and a half roughly, in those areas, but we have a graduate, there's a huge amount of work that's been done in the area of helping people continue to graduate, have alternate pathways. And we're expecting, especially with the work that's happening around academic and career planning, and to be able to help them really dive into not just graduation, to get out, to exit a program, but actually heading somewhere and seeing how this builds, we're seeing that graduate, we're expecting that graduation rate to continue to climb. So, again, that's, that is an area of district strength. It's fairly high statewide, but we, we've exceeded that before and we expect to continue exceeding that one. So of our strategic priority in the social emotional learning, it's not a straight one-to-one, but that is an influencing factor that we're seeing something there. Now, the last one that we really need to focus on here also is, let's talk, the third one, and you've heard a lot of discussion of this over the years, is equity. How can we go ahead and teach every, we can make our curriculum accessible for all learners, not just one band or another? How can we help them all work? We do work with co-teaching, we do work with advisories, we basically, how do we meet, how well do we differentiate? How well do we meet people where they're at? Well, in that particular area, this is an area where our work has been, has come up on, and this comes particularly in closing gaps. I'd like to point out, we had a very good report card last year. I'd like to note that in closing gaps, we went up, we did even better. Closing gaps basically is asking that area of, if there's, let's say, we have a total, let's say forty percent of the student body is proficient in ELA. Well, what that usually means is, let's say the students who are socio-disadvantaged, socio-economically disadvantaged, might be coming in at, say, twenty-five percent, whereas those without a socio-economic disadvantage are coming in at fifty percent. You, you put those together and we get, we say forty, but really, if, but if you've got fifty percent, twenty-five percent, you've got a twenty-five point gap between different parts of your population. And so we look at those for various things. We look at disability, we look at socio-economic disadvantage, it's also calculated for racial differences. And this is an area which we are not just above state average, but we're really accelerating and we're doing increasingly better at this. Again, let's note that working in inclusive classrooms, working that is something that takes several years of people to get good at. We've been doing this for several years, we're getting better at it. And that's being reflected in our closing the gap scores.
Can you tell, maybe I don't understand this, but, the closing the gap, can you tell if you're bringing the bottom up or bringing the top down?
Yes, you can. We can, and I can't, I can, they're broken down by, grade by grade and we can look at those. But in overall, right now, I would say that our top is holding, as, you know, as reflected, it's holding and the bottom is, and it's, it's not closing because the top's diving and the bottom's coming up to meet it. Our, our top is roughly about flat, bearing somewhat, and the, and the other one is coming up. I'd like to point this out to you, actually, in the, if I can draw your attention to that, great question, thank you, Mr. Mahon, is, if I can draw your attention to the thing, the link that was in the board packet, that came along with this. For example, if we went, if you go to, hang on, let me pull this up. This document right here, and specifically, this illustrates it in NACUSA ELA performance. And so let's use these numbers to answer your question here. Here is the, and this isn't a year-to-year, and so this really isn't showing the gap. And so, but you'll notice here is, in ELA proficiency by disability status. This was, let's take Humke. The overall, if we're going to look at that, the non-gap here, Humke came at an overall proficiency rate at thirty-nine point five, whereas the state was forty-three point seven, so pretty close within that area. If we take a look at the, at the gaps, well, this came at forty-two point seven, which is a tick below the, where the state is forty-seven point four, but notice, students with disabilities, eighteen point two, eighteen point five. The students with disabilities are right on where state levels are. That wasn't the case in previous years.
Right.
And that, we're seeing that same thing happen. If we take a look at economic status, look just at the economic disadvantage, twenty-six point three in the district, twenty-eight point two statewide. It's really close to where it is, that was not the case in previous years. And that same pattern follows if you look at all the buildings. If you look particularly at the gaps, with either a disadvantage or disability or racial varies those, the state and our numbers are now comparable, where before those were, there was a bit of a gulf. And so, the, when you start looking at these split out, which we need to, we need to get an idea of not just how the average is, but where are people on the margins? And by margins, we're also looking at how people are not just at the low end, but also the high end, how people are doing, at excelling of getting advanced scores, and those type of areas is something we're tracking. But those numbers are coming more in line with the state averages, which is why we're seeing our closing the gap score, score is growing there too. Again, we attribute that to several years and very hard work of teachers who are working to be able to reach a wider range of students and be able to do the work behind that. But having done it for several years, the teachers are getting better at it, the students are getting better at it. And we're expecting to see that continue. So if, just, so coming back to that overall, if we're going to look at the state report card, this is, we're a titch below, we're, we're below where we want to be, certainly. And the biggest area of improvement where it needs to change is student achievement. But we are, because of that, that is the reason for our choice of strategic plan, is because to be able to look specifically at areas that would help us get better at achievement and learn to get better at it over several years. And systems in place to help support teachers and support students to be able to get better at these areas. And we've already seen that process and been rewarded for that on our process. Again, if you take a look at our overall state report card, we, right now, even in a down year, are just a hair below exceeds expectations. We're expecting that to, as we get better, to continue to grow in future years. So, that was a drink of water out of, that was a lot of numbers, short period, I told, I was told I had fifteen minutes. We'll go into a longer deep dive on this at a board workshop.
So coming up in December then, we're going to look at math. So we certainly are trying to get this information out to the board members early enough so you can really chew on it. So do you have any questions around the data? Or coming up in December, would you like a different presentation?
Yes.
Or were you comfortable with kind of tying it back to the strategic plan? Now, remember, next year, we're going to try to really focus in on dollars too, the financial pieces, and tying that back to, you know, kind of similar to what Nathan did here in that strategy plan. Do we, do we miss anything, Principal?
Very good, very good. Well, thank you, Nathan, for your time. And it's, it's hard to see that number depth. As you've said, we, we miss exceeding expectations by just a short amount.
We don't want to just barely clear the line though.
I know. But we'd like, you know, we have an expectation, and I know that everybody's on board with getting us, getting us to where we need to be. So we very much appreciate that. I look forward to digging into the numbers deeper and deeper.
Okay, and that will, so do we.
And Nathan, so December, I think we'll probably have that Thursday meeting before the.
Beautiful. And that will give us more time to go. And, and what questions you have on there, certainly bring them. It takes a while to process, it's taken me, I've had, I've had a month lead up to this to process these numbers, and you're processing it in just a short period of time. So please, take what questions you have, bring them, let's go ahead and look at that.
Thank you.
And this is a results policy, our two academic performance, and I'm looking for a motion to accept the ELA information as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Operational expectations. We have two, two operational expectations on the agenda this week. The first is being operate, excuse me, asset protection. Let me clear out it here, I get confused. Should I read that? I'll find it, I got it. Essentially, what this is, is a operational expectation that the district administrator has, has, district administrator as well as, in operation manager, has maintained adequate property and casualty insurance for the district, comprehensive general liability, workman's comp. Within the board packet, Lynn provided a list and cost of the insurances that we have, the loss prevention. And I think, you know, it's, I'd like to highlight some of that, and one, I think, would be the general, the general, Lynn, if you could help me.
Liability, general liability?
General liability, or the coverage for all.
Yep.
You know, that, could you explain that a little bit? So there's understanding that, you know, all employees are actually covered.
That is exactly right.
Yeah.
So, for example, if an employee got hurt at work, that would be a workman's comp claim. If, I'm trying to think of a, of an example.
Say if a parent accused a teacher or something.
Yes, that is correct. Then it would be covered under the district's policy. They are not responsible for getting their own attorney or anything like that, that would be covered under the district's umbrella policy.
That's, I think it's important to note that even we as board members are covered by that policy.
Correct.
For our actions. I can't remember the name of that policy.
Yeah, you're the testing, aren't you?
But it's there, and I, I think it's important. And if we look at the summation of these costs, these are liability and asset protection, but I tried to add them all up, but it's in excess of three hundred thousand dollars per year. So that's, it's a big, big budget. And, you know, Lynn works very, very, very diligently with our insurance agent to obtain the lowest cost coverage possible. This includes auto, all these things. And one thing that Lynn has made, made available is that anytime that board members wanted, the insurance company would come in and make a presentation on the types of services or the work they've done in reducing the, you know, getting us the best cost, they're willing to comment on as requested. And, you know, we may, we may entertain that in the future, but I think, you know, we can be very proud of the work that's been done. And that was, that was one piece of evidence in, in showing that, you know, that, that the, the district has fulfilled its responsibilities with not only asset protection, but also protection of all of our employees. And I think that's just so important for all of our employees to understand, from the secretaries to the aides to the teachers, that we got their back, you know? And I think there's some misunderstandings at times about that. And so I wanted to reemphasize that. So, at this point, there was no reports from any board members with regards to any non-compliances, so I'm looking for the motion to accept asset protection as presented.
I'll make a motion to, that the board finds itself in compliance with policy OE eight, which is operational expectation, asset protection.
Do we have a motion on the floor?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, we are now on to operational expectation ten, communication with the public. Communication with the public is a kind of a big one. And this is, this is, I'm the district administrator, and I say that kindly, Terry. The district administrator shall assure that the public is adequately informed of all the condition and direction of the district. There have been a number of, what's the word I'm looking for? Evidence?
Artifacts.
Artifacts. A number of artifacts that, that were, were provided, you know, items such as our newsletter, district webpage, alert now, board and city, joint council meetings, community conversations.
We also, actually, a couple of things that got left off here were, like, some of the communication advisory, parent advisory meetings, like, have started at Humke, we talked again today after the situation that happened last Friday about perhaps having these ongoing conversations at each building so that there's a constant opportunity for dialogue between parents that might be concerned or want to share celebrations with each school. So that's something that we've talked about.
Yeah.
But also, we've, we've got a new tool, Parent Square, and I don't know if you've heard of it. Would, would somebody like to talk a little bit about Parent Square? Keith, you kind of.
Sure. So Parent Square is a tool that opens up, you can send both email and text messages, but it also, what's great about it is it opens up two-way communication because a parent can respond back, basically. If you send a message, the parent is able to, it's a, a private message, so it doesn't go out to everyone that received it, but they can send a text back. And teachers can go in by their specific classes and send messages only to the parents' families of students in a specific class. It also, it has a lot of different features. Quite honestly, Diana is, she's our expert on it and is finding different features daily that she's, you know, letting me know about. And we're starting, we utilized it for. And we're starting, we utilized it for our parent-teacher conference sign-up at the high school, which, last year, we had a maximum of twenty-five people show up for conferences on a given night. On our first, we had three nights of conferences in the past week and a half, and on the first night, we had seventy-one signed up, on the second night, we had forty-two signed up, and on the third night, we had thirty-one signed up. So, and a lot of that was due to, well, some of it, there were just various changes we made, but the nice part about it was the teachers and the staff, all we had to do was we put together Parent Square messages, sent it out, and then teachers, parents were able to sign up through Parent Square. So, that was fantastic.
Well, I'm adding it, so I added Parent Square and parent advisory. Any others?
I, I'm, are you aware of any that I missed?
I do think that as we move through policy governance, that, and looking at this, that, you know, we're going to have to look at those opportunities throughout the year where this information is being shared. Certainly, you know, your, your exposure out in the community with even your role in Reggie, your role in Courage, your role in library, and, you know, certainly, our most recent meetings with the city in the planning process, and the, you know, the school board and council members meeting. We just need to, I think, do a better job of documenting.
Sure.
You know? But, again, I think, you know, that at this point, there was no fight, there was no responses of any non-compliances. And I guess I would, is there anything that we need to bring up where we feel at this time? I think, I think that this needs to be strong, you know, as we move forward, this will be stronger. But, you know, in our initial run with policy governance, and, and again, I'd have to say that we, you know, there was no, no, no exceptions, non-compliance. Any kind of questions or discussions that anybody has? Brian? I'm looking then for a motion to approve operational expectation number ten, communicating with the public.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We are now on to a governance policy, this is governance policy, policy seven, which is, which is an agenda planning. Agenda planning, you want to read the?
Sure. To accomplish its stated goals, the board will adopt and follow an annual calendar of agenda items, which includes monitoring, review, and refinement of policies, linkages, and board performance, in addition to evaluation of district administrator. So, Diana, last year, created this document that we, I think, hopefully, everybody's been following on a monthly basis, that really keeps track of all the policies, and then all of the other board development and other board work. So, for example, during November, we've got the fall sports survey for athletes and parents, which I'll be sending out to you, I've got the results, or the summary of results, and then we have the school culture survey. So, really, it's helped us keep on track. I don't, any comments about what might change related to this?
With the agenda planning in regards to policy governance, again, we're kind of in our initial stages. I think that, you know, we're going to have to evaluate this through a board, what do you want to say?
A workshop?
Workshop.
Or getaway.
A retreat?
Retreat, you know, workshop. Where we, what's that?
Advance.
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 That's right.
Where we can really look at this and make sure that our agenda items are meeting the expectations of our stakeholders. You know, I think all of us have felt a little limited by the, some of the restraints that policy governance has seemingly put on us, and our ability to really sometimes talk about things in an open, you know, open forum. Not to say that these things aren't getting done, and policy governance certainly has proven its, its, how do you want to say that?
It's worth?
It's worth, and it's how we, how we learn to use it. You know, Doug and I spoke briefly, and, you know, we kind of took up, we took, we took a policy that was out there, and we kind of, we kind of made it our own, but this is, this is something that we as a district need to live with, and if we need to make changes to it, that's certainly something that we as a board need to address. And, again, again, with input as needed from everybody else. So, I guess, and again, in this fight, in this, in this agenda planning, there was no, there was no, I guess, any discussions, there was no non-compliances found. I think we need to talk more about it, you know, in that retreat, where we are, and just kind of, you know, just do a fifty-thousand-foot view of.
Sure.
What might work. But at this point, no non-compliances, I'm looking for a motion to approve governance policy seven, agenda planning as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. We are now to the consent agenda. Does anybody want to say anything about the resignations?
I will. Patricia Strangfeld, she was a part-time custodian at Nacusa High School, and Carol Anderson, she was the AMS School Nutrition Program Assistant. We, they decided to move on, and we just wish them luck in their future.
Yeah, I'd like to wish Patty luck. She was a kind of a friend over there at nights after games and stuff, and Carol as well. So, thank you very much, Lynn, and we wish them the very best. Donations?
Yes.
Employment.
Oh, employment, yes.
Yep, Penny Russell, she is going to be the AMS School Nutrition Program Assistant. She is actually returning to us, she used to be an employee of the School Nutrition Program, and she is returning to that position, so we're happy to have her back.
Fantastic, it's good to get somebody like that back. Would somebody like to read the donations, any?
Sure.
Doug?
Eight hundred and twenty dollars for the AMS Nacusa High School softball program in memory of Leon Butch Rzeszewski. He had a passion for the sport and coached for the school district for many years, Butch passed away September twenty-seventh of this year. So, we thank you for that donation. Judy Voss donated an alto saxophone to the AMS band program. And then, for Backpack for Kids, we have several donations, Bethlehem Lutheran Church, a hundred and ten dollars, Sacred Heart Collections, one hundred and forty-five dollars, and David and Carol Sonnenberg, one hundred dollars, and College Care Package Event, one hundred and seventy dollars. We thank you all for those donations, and I believe that is it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Yosted. The other items on the consent agenda, board minutes, treasury report and check register. If there are no further questions or discussions, I would call for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I will. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, future meetings and agenda items. We have, we're moving into kind of a busy time period. We are going to be looking at our strategic planning, community conversations. We have four scheduled, November twenty-ninth, November thirtieth, December fourth, December fifth. What we're doing is we're taking our strategic plan out to the stakeholders of our community and asking for feedback on that strategic plan. We want their input, we want their, their ideas, and, you know, we essentially, you know, we want them to be able to own our district, our district strategic plan, as well as our vision, which is really where the strategic plan grows from. There's going to be a lot of work, and we'll take the summation of the, of the minutes from these meetings, and, you know, put that together and, and, and bring it out. In addition to the four community meetings, or strategic individual meetings, we're also going to be holding three specific building meetings.
District staff conversations.
District staff conversations, AMS, December sixth, NHS, December thirteenth, and Humke, December twentieth. And we, we just encourage people to come out and, and, you know, the invites were sent out for the.
Community, and also it's been in the newsletter.
Been in the newsletter.
So, come one, come all.
Come one, come all. That's, that's fantastic. December fourteenth, we have a policy governance meeting, and December nineteenth, we have a regular board meeting. In addition, and that's not on here, we are going to be having a board forum, and I would like to try to schedule it before Christmas. The board forum is going to be an opportunity for the board to be available for our community and concerned citizens, and this is kind of a, a response to some concerns that were brought forth by, by certain parents and certain individuals. And it's actually something that, you know, we, in looking at our, our working with the community and communicating with the community, it's really, it's time to do it.
It's a linkage, yeah.
It's a linkage, and I think it can, you know, there are, it's something that can be very powerful, and I'm going to, you know, it's going to be hard to find a date, I'd like to avoid the first week of December, if we can. And I think, you know, Wednesdays might be the best, I think, because of the lack of Also, but we have church and religious activities possibly on that Wednesday. But, you know, maybe we'll have to have two, schedule two meetings to satisfy everybody. But it's not going to be a one-time event, because again, as Terry mentioned, this is a linkage that I think we can follow through. And, you know, even when we finish the strategic plan, you know, to bring that out to a community meeting is so important, and, you know, we're going to get this, this board forum scheduled for December, and I'd like to see, you know, standing room only for whatever time or place that we are able to find. We're going to have to find a date, and we'll, we'll, we'll try to work with the board members and, and.
Get as many as we can there, yeah.
Yep, get as many as we can.
What time is that, December fourteenth meeting? Does it say?
Oh, that's, those are at six.
Those are at six, and that's really, that's where we can talk about what, you know, coming up in the board meeting. That date of December fourteenth, we only have one policy, so frankly, December fourteenth would be an open date. That is a Thursday, however.
Oh, to go move right into that forum.
We could move right into that forum on the fourteenth.
Might be a good idea.
That's an opportunity. We might, you know, I think, you know, six PM, do you think is a good time?
Well, if we start this at six, we'd be done, we'd be ready for six-thirty forum.
I don't think we even need to talk about this as a board.
Oh, okay.
Because it's going to be, it's going to be presented.
Well, it might give Nathan a good, well, I mean, it's up to the board.
I think it's going to be.
If you're okay with the presentation, like you got around ELA, next month's month for math, we're, we're fine.
I was satisfied with the discussion on ELA tonight, I, you know, and.
As long as there's more discussion, I'm doing most of the talking, that's, so.
Okay.
We can give you the amounts, you know, we can give us some stuff.
Well, maybe we can get fifteen minutes to talk on that.
Okay.
We're negotiating here.
But I want to give the public the opportunity and give them the time for the board.
Sure.
So, that's, that's out there, and, you know, we just, we as board members and administrators, we have a responsibility to the stakeholders in our community, and we just want to be there to listen and respond to their, their concerns. So, with that long-winded discussion, is where I did all the talking. I would like to thank everybody for all the work tonight and their attendance. At this point, I'd like to call for a motion to adjourn.
Happy Thanksgiving.
I make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. And indeed, happy Thanksgiving, safe travels to all. Thank you very much.